All right, it's seven o'clock. We will call the meeting to an end. Mr. Troxel, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Legits?
Pledge of Legits.
Legits to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cricket Show Board Members Present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
It has. We are working off of the revised agenda from last week.
Public Comments. Mrs. Coleman, do you have anybody wishing to address the board? Great. Per Policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, the parent or the legal guardian of an enrolled district student, or an enrolled district student. Person wishing to participate must physically be present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of thirty minutes will be given for public comments. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant with only the first three minutes being designated to the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see Policies 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. So we have two people wishing to address the board. Mr. Logmeier.
Thank you. I'm George Logmeier. I do live in Richland Center. Spent a lot of times at this building, mainly in the auditorium. And that's what I'd like to speak to you today about is the auditorium part of the referendum. One of the issues... Oops, sorry. I never did start. Am I going to get more time? Ten seconds. Still not going, but that's okay. What I wanted to comment on is Cole can talk about two other things, but Cole and I work with Prairie Duchesne Performing Arts Center, and we are consulted on when they want to bring in acts into the community, into that space. So we've seen what a lot of these touring acts, smaller venues, Christmas-type things, family-friendly events need in a performing arts center. And unfortunately, ours does not meet those requirements today. And it would be very hard to do that. And I really think that there is a marketability that we're missing with this space. It's a beautiful space. It's a comfortable space. It is a safe space. And we should make it a space that we can use in our community and that we could use to bring more things in, bring more attention to our space, to our community, and to our school itself itself, and show what we can actually do. If we have that upgrade, it's a way that I believe the school district could make money on it. Not that that's the important part of it, but some of the costs could be recuperated through those selling of tickets, selling of the space in a little bit easier way. Today, if you were to bring in a touring act, I can guarantee you, the audio system is not up to date. I used this auditorium for all of the dance recitals. They do all the audio for all the dance recitals. I do not use the audio equipment in that space. I bring all of my own in for every dance recital. And I use all of my own equipment because it is not... Code is not... It's not up to what we need today. And I think if you had that space up to date, we could find a lot more uses for this space and for what it can do for our community, for our school, and for the people in this area. And it would be a lot... Unfortunately, it'd be a lot more fun to be around in that space. Right now, not so comfortable, all the time, because we can't always hear, can't always see. And we just don't have the things we need in that space to bring in new things. Right now, we just keep reverting the same thing over and over and over again. We should try to be bringing new things in, selling space, bringing in different groups, seeing what we could bring into the community as items, or groups, or fun activities for our students, for our families, and for our community itself. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Muth?
Did start. Well, thank you first of all to the board. Obviously, like George kind of alluded to, I want to speak on behalf of the inclusion of the auditorium portion of that referendum as a whole being included. I've obviously worked here a lot as well. I've been in the auditorium as a high school student through here and in that space. And so I've got a lot of vested time and interest in that as well. There's two things I kind of wanted to highlight based on what you saw on Thursday, and two of those topics are related to energy efficiency and safety items. Obviously, over time, that building has gotten older. From an energy efficiency standpoint, technology's moved on. They now use solid state lighting, so LED-based lighting and not tungsten. Part of that package is over 250,000 of that to completely change and replace the current stage fixtures out with LED. The minute that happens, the school district's going to realize savings of over 75% of their energy usage for those systems in the auditorium, which is significant, but it's something that really helps the district out long-term as well. And so there's really great use of that money in there. The other thing I kind of wanted to touch on briefly were safety-related items. Obviously, I'm going to start with the most basic thing, which is the floor itself. That floor in there, the stage floor, was intended to last five to 10 years, and some of that is still original, over 30 years old. And so some of those panels have been replaced, but as we see dancers on that stage, I get nervous. Steen large splinters avoid as some of the plywood's be laminated. So seeing that floor completely replaced, I think, would be a huge asset and a huge benefit to anybody that actually walks over that stage. The other thing I was going to quick highlight was the rigging system, which is actually the motors that control the battens or the pipes for the lighting fixtures themselves that come in and out. That technology has moved on, and while those are still currently operating, just like anything technology-based, when it stops working, it's going to be bad because it's going to do it when it's on the deck or on the stage floor, and you can't get it out of the way and do your show. There's also new safety features in there, so it'll tell you if you overloaded the pipe, it'll tell you if you run into something, it'll stop. And you can also set user pass codes and things like that on the new controllers to prevent access and to limit the access to just who needs it. Right now, if you were to do that, you could probably take the soda pop tab or a screwdriver and go down and turn those on because it's just worn out to that extent. So things like that, I think, on the safety side can use the benefit. And I think, as George mentioned, just all of these improvements will make the whole space marketable and continue to be a safe space. It's got really great bones, and I think this would just elevate it back to that status that we need in the community. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, time to go ahead and forward. For A, the District Administrator's Report.
Okay, so several reminders and updates for the board and the public. First of all, most pressing, with the inclement weather approaching, we did call off school already for tomorrow. So any students should not be attending school tomorrow. Many of the neighborhood school districts, if not all of them at this point, have done the same. So that was obviously unscheduled, but that's what's going to be happening tomorrow. It's also a good time to remind all of our family of our official means of communication as it relates to weather. The three Madison news stations, WRCO, are the most... Our official means for emergency cancellations of that sort. Friday, this Friday is a scheduled early release, so students will be getting out early. Our staff will partake in end-of-the-day in-service. And then that also marks the last day of quarter two for our students. Monday, then, is a district closed holiday due to the observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Those are the calendar updates. And then some other points of interest here. State Convention is next week. So myself, Mr. Bosworth, Mr. Joseph, and Dr. Johnson, along with Mr. Bailey and Ms. Troxel, will be attending the state conference in Milwaukee. We'll be leaving Tuesday afternoon and returning on Friday afternoon. Laura Selgaby will be the point person as it relates to any weather cancellations, both for athletics and school. In my absence, and Mr. Bosworth's absence, she'll be in communication with us for any other situations that may arise. We'll certainly have our phones available, but she'll be kind of the on-the-ground person as it relates to those kinds of cancellations and those kinds of things. And then, lastly, the deadline has passed for the April ballot for board members. Mr. Dowdner and Mr. Bailey will be running unopposed as incumbents. Mrs. Wertz turned in her non-candidacy papers. At this point, we do not have any... No one turned in their papers to run officially on the ballot. However, if someone that lives in Area 1, which is the eastern side, the rural part of our district, they can still turn in paperwork. They can pick up a folder at the district office, so Laura Steele and/or myself can talk them through any questions that they might have, talk them through the forms. They can still turn those forms in, and they would be listed as an official write-in candidate. And you have to be a registered writing candidate in order to officially become that nomination in April. So at this point, that will be a write-in, and if there's anyone in Area 1 East that is interested in being that official writing candidate, they should pick up the paperwork. I don't have the deadline with me, but I believe it's the day of the primary in February when that write-in name would have to be submitted to the board, or to the district office. So if anybody has any questions, they can certainly contact district office. A lot of information there in a short amount of time. Does the board have any questions for me regarding any of that? Okay, thank you.
For B, Board Member Reports.
The Richland School District Foundation met on December 18th, but threw and updated the bylaws. Most of it was just language to get current. There are still things, speaking of mailing information, mailing notifications instead of using electronic means. We are adding an IT job description, so that would be a new officer position we'll be adding. And we've also decided to expand the foundation to nine members instead of just seven. Went over some of the scholarships and fundings that just need those, that information current and up-to-date. And we did end up having an IRS audit that Ms. Jamie Warren took care of and have all of that information taken care of as well.
Buildings, Property, and Transportation met Thursday, December 21st. The topics we covered is our monthly review of schedule at a glance, a milk bid process, the food service purveyor bid process. We got an update on a new combination oven that needed to be purchased in the food staff side of things. We reviewed appliances in classrooms, specifically those that could be deemed unsafe for generating heat. And then lastly, was the sale and disposal of items.
I have one question. The two additional seats, were those being opened up to just the general public, I assume?
The general public, yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, on to 4C, Activities Director Report.
Okay, so in continuing with our administrative reports that we started prior to the new year, a couple administrative reports tonight, the first being Laura Selgaby on our CHS activities.
Good evening. As you know, we have many clubs, co-curriculars, and athletics at Richland Center High School, so I will try to go through as best I can, but still respect your time and give everybody a little bit of information about what we've been going on here. The 23-24 school year has been very busy, full of athletics and other school events and activities. Some of our activities, such as homecoming and student council activities, the musical and FFA events, have been showcased by our principals or by these groups as they present to you as well, so I will speak about the many others that we have. I reached out to our club advisors and co-curricular directors, and these are the highlights that I received from many of them. Our National Honors Society had their induction ceremony October 20th, where they welcomed 18 new sophomores, new seniors into their group. NHS currently has 44 members who have been selected based on National Honors Society's criteria of scholarship, character, leadership, and service, and they have a lengthy lift of activities that they are actively participating in, both within our school and the community. Jamie Jones and Michelle Keller are their advisors. Our fall cheerleading... Our fall football cheerleading team consisted of 11 athletes who participated at our football games, rain, shine, and snow, or sleet. They also hosted their second mini-cheer camp this year and had a fantastic turnout with 42 mini-cheer enthusiasts joining them. The highlight was the minis got to join the team for a brief presentation during a football game. Cheer directors are Jody Imhoff and Tiffany Hicks. Forensics, under the direction of Sonia Clarkson, assisted by Amanda Allen and Todd Ostrander, has their season underway. They have 24 active students working on their various pieces and preparing for their first competitions on February 19. The RCHS Pride Ally Alliance has been meeting once per month with about 15 students coming to each meeting. The Pride Ally Alliance celebrated winter break by having a movie night the Thursday before break started and watching The Nightmare Before Christmas. The club is advised by Aaron Detman. The Southwest Wisconsin Conference Leadership Team and Pep Club. Pep Club hosted their annual craft fair earlier this year. Funds earned during that craft fair support our athletes' accomplishments throughout the year during assemblies and any postseason accomplishments and assemblies they have. The Southwest Wisconsin Leadership Team comprises of 20 student-athletes from Richland Center who each year travel to a different SWC school and participate in a sportsmanship summit with other schools. This is our second year of participation, and we traveled to Lancaster to participate in a day with Mark Korbensky presiding over the day's activities. The students came back and shared they discussed many topics and discussed a sportsmanship initiative they wanted to bring back to RCHS. I advise both of these groups. Art Club is for all students who want to create. We have about 30 students, 7th through 12th grade. Students can work on art for class or whatever inspires them. This club has also in the past made art for the halls to help give color to the walls and bring joy to the students. Art Club is advised by Craig Rogers. 7th and 8th grade Student Council has added activities to their profile this year. They held a Halloween dance this fall and are planning a second dance for the spring. They have seen their membership double from last year and have 20 active members participating. Danny Storkson and Jill Plonkra are their advisors. Our senior class of 24 is currently planning and preparing for their senior snowball dance to be held on Saturday, January 27th at RCHS. Our senior class is advised by Sonia Clarkson. RCHS Computer Club has been meeting once per month with about 20 students coming each meeting. The Winter Rocket League eSports team competed... Competition started up in December and has been meeting weekly to play against other high schools across Wisconsin, such as Pius, Brookfield Academy, and New Berlin West High School. Computer Club is advised by Aaron Detman. FBLA has had a busy year. They currently have six students preparing to compete at regionals coming in February, and they are in the process of putting together our first community service project, as well with plans to attend FBLA Day with the Bucks in February. FBLA is advised by Deanna LaSavage. Winter Cheerleading. Our winter cheer facilitates two teams, one for wrestling, one for basketball. They have 11 cheerleaders who get to cheer and travel to support our athletes during the winter season. Our directors for cheer are Jody Imhoff and Danny Storkson. RCHS Eat &amp; Read Club has been meeting once per month. Every month, about half a dozen students read a different book, and then all the club members meet to eat snacks and discuss the book. All of the books have been Battle of the Book selection, so students don't have to choose between activities. They can be in both events. The Eat &amp; Read Club just finished reading All American Boys by Jason Reynolds for December, and for January will be reading Nothing More to Tell by Karen McManus. The club is advised by Aaron Detman. When reaching out to our athletic coaches, here are some of the highlights I have received from their seasons. Our fall seasons first. Boys soccer. Our boys soccer's recent success has caused our team numbers to double from previous seasons. We had 38 athletes this year and were able to run two full teams. The soccer teams had 12 athletes recognized on the All-Conference list, ranging from honorable mention through our first-team All-Conference goalie selection in Grayson Baker. Our soccer teams are coached by Tom Stadler, Steve Bailey, Josh Clark, and John Crunk. Cross country. We had 25 total RCHS athletes competing in cross country at the 7-12 level. We also had three IFCA high school runners join through our COOP. The highlights for the cross-country program include six All-Conference runners, four invitationals that our boys team won throughout the season, Kaylee Peterson qualified for the state meet for the third time, and for the first time since 1976, we had a male athlete, actually two, qualify for the state tournament. The cross-country team is coached by Eric Mindham and assisted by Connor Fieldhouse and Brenda Walton. Football. We had 75 football participants in grades 7 through 12. This is a great turnover of athletes for a growing program. Our teams have made great strides and dedication in their efforts and goals in the weight room, and those are paying off. This year, the team had four athletes recognized with first-team All-Conference selection. Senior Tate Perkins was recognized on the All-Region team, and sophomore Liam Figerson was recognized on both the All-Region and All-State teams as our punter. The football program's head coach is Andrew Troxel, and he manages a staff of nine paid coaches. Volleyball. Our program facilitated 67 athletes this fall and had five full teams. The varsity had a highly successful season with over 25 wins. They won the Baraboo Tournament and had a successful team fundraiser where over $500 was donated to Grace by the team. They had multiple athletes recognized on the All-Conference team, as well as their senior starter Kayla Gander reaching her 1,000 assists for a career, which is a huge accomplishment in the volleyball world. The varsity is coached by Jamie Johnson, and he is assisted by Ashlyn Coleman and Michaela Taft. Our winter sports, which are just about halfway through, boys basketball. The program has 43 athletes in grades 7 and 12 fielding five teams. They are a young team who has seen recent growth. A highlight for them was the ability to play Baraboo last Saturday at the Five-Serv Forum in Milwaukee, which is a fantastic opportunity for our athletes and our coaches. Our team is coached by Brian Pauls and assisted by Colton Wilson and Kyle Nelson. Girls' basketball. Our program has 32 athletes in grades 7 through 12. We are a young program with a new coach and are seeing improvements every day. We recently played competitively during our holiday tournament over the break. The team is coached by Alec Edset and assisted by Keegan, Dre, and Bailey Lawson. Wrestling. We have 37 male athletes and three female athletes, grades 7 through 12 this season, all of whom are having a good year. Our boys team just won the Lee Griffin Invitational at Kickapoo this past weekend with a small roster of only seven athletes. Ethan Haiti was named co-MVP of the tournament, and Emma Haiti won her weight class on the girls' side. Over the break, the team competed at the highly touted Bi-State Invitational in lacrosse. On the girls' side, Madison Meyer placed second, and Emma Haiti third, and Tate Perkins placed sixth, and Ethan Haiti placed 10th. The team is looking forward to a good run in the WIAA tournament series in February, where we will once again be allowed to host the Division II Super Regional. The teams are coached by Silas Coleman, Darren Gunderson, Terry Thielman, and Wyatt Seep. I would like to finish with a public thank you to the Richland School District and Board of Education for their support of clubs, co-curriculars, and athletics, especially the work that was done last year with the changes in the advisor, director, and coaching compensation table. I would also like to thank the Richland Center Athletic Booster Club. The boosters have worked for 20-plus years to support athletics in the Richland School District. In just the past one and a half years, the boosters have made donations to the district and athletic program that exceeds $52,000. These donations include paying for our huddle livestream annually, various and multiple upgrades to the high school weight room, outdoor scoreboards, many individual team requests sponsoring the cost of the SWC Leadership Summit, and our local leadership speaker, supplementing the uniform budgets, additional exercise bikes, upgrading the ice machine, and other various rehab and first aid supplies and equipment for our athletic training room. Thank you for your time to share what is happening at RCHS, clubs, co-curriculars, and athletics.
Thank you. For D, Special Education Report.
Mr. Joseph?
Okay. I promised mine would be much shorter. Not only just because that's great stuff, but I don't like public speaking, as you may know. So I do have something I'll read for tonight's report. Good evening. Tonight, I have the honor of speaking about special education within our district. Before I begin, I just want to thank you all for always being supportive of me, our special education department, and especially of our students with special needs. Next, I'll talk about special education in general, our numbers, and finally about our wonderful staff. So as review, or if you don't know, when we talk about disabilities in special education, we are not just talking about a learning disability, like in math or reading, for example. In fact, there are 12 different areas in which a student can qualify for special education. As of now, with evaluations pending, we have approximately 221 special education students, or approximately 19% of our total student population, qualifying across 12 different areas of disability. As I mentioned a minute ago, when we think of students having impairments, we often think of a learning disability. However, we currently have 41 students in our district that fit this category, accounting for approximately 19% of our district's special education population. The area that accounts for the highest percentage, around 68%, is the area of speech and language impairment. This percentage is a bit misleading, as students can qualify for services in more than one area. Speech and language impairment is probably the most common area where a student qualifies in more than one. For example, we have 151 students in the district that receive speech and language therapy, 51 of those, or roughly 23%, qualified for speech and language only. Autism is a familiar area of disability, and we have 36 students, or approximately 16% of our special education population, that fit that spectrum, all within the spectrum. Significant developmental delay is another area of disability, and this is often where our youngest learners qualify. We currently have 34 students, or 15% of our special education population. You have probably heard other health impairment or AOHI. This is quite often students with ADHD, diabetes, heart conditions, leukemia, epilepsy. They might all fall under that area. We currently have 33 students in our district, or approximately 10% of our specialized population. Emotional behavioral disability, or EBD, as it's quite often called, is another area. We have 12 students in the district that fall within that area. Intellectual disability, or ID, and traumatic brain injury are two more areas, and we have 11 students in the district that qualify under that area. Deaf, hard of hearing, blind, visually impaired, deaf-blind are three more areas of disability, and we have 10 students within these areas. Finally, we have three students that have qualified for special education within the area of what's called orthopedic impairment. Again, like mentioned before, as of now, we currently have 221 special ed students across 12 different areas of disability. This number is constantly changing as students qualify during the year or students transfer into our district, just like we had four of us this last week. All of these students are unique and special in their own way, and each have their own individual needs. In order to meet these needs, we need to have amazing, dedicated, and devoted staff. To go along with our 21 special education staff, we have 26 curricular professionals across the district. All of these 47 individuals work extremely hard every day to assist our students in reaching their full potential. They are often the champions and vocal advocates for our students with special needs. They not only teach them how to read, write, do arithmetic, and regulate their emotions, but they teach them confidence and a belief in themselves that they carry with them for the rest of their lives. I am thankful for our wonderful special education team and the service they provide on behalf of our district. And once again, I thank you for your continued support. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. For E, the FFA Update Report.
So the FFA was on a schedule, or agenda, an earlier meeting, but due to some illnesses, we postponed them, and we have some student representatives from the... And we have some student representatives from the FFA speaking today.
I'm Mary Marvel from the Richland Center FFA chapter. I'm currently serving as the president for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school district. And right now, for our FFA recap, we have our fruit sale. We had a successful twenty-twenty and food fruit sale. We had over, we had over eight thousand dollars in sales. All of our proceeds go towards events, registrations, hotel rooms, plant sales supplies, and our end of the year valet that we have. I guess at the end of the year. And any other time that they run during the year. Before Christmas break, a group members went to a Christmas caroling in Pine Valley, and they spread holiday cheer to residents by singing and singing.
I'm Dana Baker. I'm the secretary of our FFA. And our upcoming events, our spring plant sales coming at the end of, our spring plants are coming at the end of January, and we'll be busy pottying and managing the greenhouse to have baskets and plants available for our sale later this spring. LDEs, district leadership development events, are on February eighth at Ifika. We have a full sign-up of members competing in various events, which is awesome. Please wish them luck as they represent our Richland Center FFA and hopefully advance on the sectionals. Last year, we had two members make it to the state competition. FFA Week is February seventeenth through the twenty-fourth. We are gearing up for a great week of educating the Richland Center High School student body and FFA, about FFA and agriculture. Career development events, CDs, or judging competitions, are at UW's Flatville on March twenty-first. Last year, we had a livestock and dairy judging team compete.
Lastly, we, with our Richland Center agling update, Friday, December twenty-second, before Christmas break, a group of members went down to the shed that we had, we set up seven pans for our livestock. Goals that have bottle lamps and FFA, uh, FFA members show stock here late in the winter and early spring. Thank you for your support on the project. We have a lot of growing interest from members that want to show livestock. We wouldn't have the opportunity to do so without this facility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two, ten, and five, the minutes, five A. Is there a motion to approve the special meetings minutes of December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dowdna. Discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 Aye. Five B, is there a motion to approve special meetings minutes from November eighth, two thousand twenty-three, as presented?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Discussion? Mr. Troxel?
Aye.
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 Time to gen seven, financial items, six A, approval of statement of cash?
I move we approve the statement of cash dated January third, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion was made by Mr. Dowdna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wertz. Mr. Bosworth?
If you look at the statement of cash, you can see a lot of activity in the Community First account and a lot of activity in the state investment pool. But you have to notice the balance in the Community First is fairly low. That's by design. We, we tend to earn more interest in the investment pool, and we try to keep more money in there and transfer it to the community service, Community First account, as needed.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Dowdna?
Aye.
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 Right, time to six B, approval of invoices.
I move we approve Community First Bank General Checking Accounts checks number eight-five-eight-six-five through number eight-five-nine-three-one. VCH number two-three-two-four-zero-zero-six-eight-three through two-three-two-four-zero-zero-seven-seven-four. And EFT numbers two-zero-two-three-zero-zero-zero-four-eight through two-zero-two-three-zero-zero-five-four for a net total of eight-hundred-eighty-two-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Dowdna. Is there a second?
I will.
Seconded by Mr. Huntimer. Mr. Bosworth, anything you'd like to point out or add?
Yes, a couple things to point out. If you look at that memo, you'll notice that those two are mirror images of each other. Through the holidays, only one board meeting, all of that stuff was released prior. And then if you will look at the listing of specific expenditures, maybe four things to point out. At the bottom of page three, you would see Quartz Health, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand. That's a quarterly payment for insurance premiums. Now, that was a sizable one. People may have wondered about that. Second thing, if you would look at page eight, you'll just notice some, towards the top there, you'll notice some expenditures towards, first of all, towards CISA III. Those are primarily for dual enrollment opportunities. Some dollar amounts there, about four thousand dollars. And then at the, a couple, a couple lines down, class fees for ROA. You'll see that's nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety dollars. That is large, but I would remind you that that has decreased significantly from in years past as we have shifted most of those dollars towards partner school. Third thing to point out would be at the bottom of page nine, parking lot light work. Some of you may have noticed that the staff parking lot on the east end was very dark before Christmas. The, the, the lines that ran out to those lights went dead, and so we ran some temporary lines out there for a little bit, and then it was quite an endeavor to dig up the pavement and bury new lines. So that's what that payment was for, but it is lit now. And then finally, on page eleven, towards the bottom there, you'll see there is a payment for Spring Law LLC of fifteen thousand dollars. And we continue to have maternity fees to make sure that we are on solid ground as it comes to legal matters and employee matters and student issues.
Mr. Huntimer?
Aye.
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 All right, time to gen seven, consent, consent agenda items. Mrs. Coleman?
Motion to accept the donation of snack basket items and gift cards for students and staff valued at approximately four hundred dollars from Community First Bank for policy seven-two-three-zero. Motion to accept the donation of money to Partner School valued at thirty thousand dollars from Kerry and Lori Norman for policy seven-two-three-zero. Motion to accept the donation of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to help with unpaid school lunches from Compear Financial for policy seven-two-three-zero. Motion to accept the donation of school supplies to RCPS valued at approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars from Richland Hospital Giving Tree for policy seven-two-three-zero. Motion to accept the donation of mittens to RCPS valued at approximately ninety dollars from Yuba Homakers for policy seven-two-three-zero. Motion to accept the donation of winter clothing items to RCPS valued at approximately sixty dollars from Karen Hope and Nancy Birch Myers per policy seven-two-three-zero. Motion to approve the revised job descriptions as presented and approve the list of items to be sold on Wisconsin Surplus.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Miss Troxel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Nickman?
Aye.
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 Aye. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank Community First Bank, Kerry and Lori Norman, Compear Financial, Richland Hospital Giving Tree, the Yuba Homakers, Karen Hope, and Nancy Birch Myers for their generous donations. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Nickman. Discussion? Mrs. Wertz?
Aye.
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 All right, time to gen nine, information discussion items, nine A, district transfers and vacancies.
With our support staff and our clerical aides, food service, maintenance, those, we have four positions open currently. We have three in the maintenance and operations field, a couple of night custodians, and as well as our grounds keeper. All of those positions have closed, and interviews are scheduled later this week, hoping to have someone hired to provide the twenty-second board meeting. Our cook position is also closed, and those interviews are pending. Then in the non-union, we do have a nursing position that we've got open, and we did just have that posting close, and interviews are scheduled on the Friday of this week for, for those folks.
Nine B, resolutions for Bosby Delegate Assembly at State Convention?
Okay, so the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, WASB, they are the organization which guides and supports all school districts, or many of the school districts, if not all, school boards across the state, including the Richland School District's Board of Education. Each year, they have proposed resolutions along with rationale for why they feel that it would be good to support that. Each district that is a member of WASB has a vote at the delegate assembly, and that delegate assembly takes place at the state convention, which is next week. Miss Troxel is our district's chosen representative, chosen by the board, and she will be voting at the delegate assembly, which takes place next Wednesday at one, starting at one-thirty. Membership will vote on these resolutions, which, which essentially determine what WASB will support on behalf of its, of its membership, on behalf of the school boards. It is not to imply that if the WASB approves it, that it becomes law or that it becomes effective immediately. It's just the things that WASB will stand behind. So there are about nine pages of resolutions. I would encourage board members to, to look through them. Again, behind, at the, at the end of each one of those, there's the rationale for why WASB believes that it's important. But if you, as an individual board member, feel strongly, one way or another, about any of the resolutions, I would encourage you to share those thoughts to Miss Troxel prior to the state convention, which will be leaving on Tuesday afternoon. Again, the delegate assembly is Wednesday at one-thirty. And then she will then take all of the information that she receives from board members, and she will cast a, a vote for each of those resolutions on behalf of the Richland School District. Again, the school board has chosen her to be our assembly voice. And so if there are contradicting views, ultimately, it will be, fall on her to determine which, which way she would like to vote as on behalf of the, the school board. Any questions on that process or what the ask is? I guess in summary, the ask is to read through them, and give Miss Troxel your feedback before Tuesday afternoon. Thank you.
Nine C, food service combination oven purchase?
Okay, so oftentimes, when the school district has a purchase, certainly ones that exceed, you know, five thousand, ten thousand dollars, we go through an extensive bid process where we bring the timelines to the committees. The committee approves the timelines, we go out for bids along with specific specifications on those bids, and then finally bring those little bids back to the board for approval. And these would be for things that we know are coming, snow plowing, you know, milk bids, summer mowing, those kinds of things. However, occasionally, there are things that come up that are unplanned. And in this case, food service has a combination oven that they use on a daily basis. It is a, a large part of what they do every day in our food service department, and they have gone through several repairs with their combination oven. And finally, the cost got to be where it was just so significant as they would have to replace the entire CPU of the current combination oven in order to be effective. And so the choice was made to purchase a new combination oven. And so we solicited bids from a couple of different places, rationale and Kesnick's, and food service did go ahead and purchase the, a new combination oven. They came for pre-installation. Either just did or would just will be coming here in the coming days, and that's scheduled for installation first part of next week. And so this is being brought to the board because it is a, an expensive item. It runs in the, in the range of about forty-three thousand dollars. Forty-five thousand dollars, I should say. That is, you know, a significant purchase, but it is needed for our food service in order to conduct its, its daily operational, operations. Fund fifty, our food service fund, will cover the cost of it. And then anything that we can get from our old combination oven, mostly for parts, because a significant amount of money would have to be put into it for repairs. Those proceeds by law would have to go back into Fund fifty since it was purchased on a Fund fifty dollar. I'm happy to, and Mr. Bosworth, I'm sure can answer any questions that the board have regarding that, but we really just wanted the board to be aware that the significant purchase is taking place.
Nine D, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, goals and priorities update?
Okay, so, well, this is a standing item that is brought to the curriculum committee each month. We had said that we would bring this to the, to the board meeting, the second meeting of each month. However, we had some goofy dates there with the holidays, and so we thought it would be best to bring it to the board this week, and then we'll, or this meeting, and bring it back to the board in February. If you haven't checked the board docs this morning, I did update board docs for the board and our public in blue with all of the updates on where we're at. I'll paraphrase and summarize each of the priorities here tonight as well, but it is, it is in the, in the electronic version of the board docs. Regarding priority number one, again, early in the school year, we had surveyed all of our staff and students on who they felt connected with in terms of trusted adult, as well as gauging the friendship levels of our, our students and whether or not they had friends in the school district, in our community, other schools, et cetera. That was done as baseline data. And the coming weeks, here prior to the end of January, we will have completed the second survey. It's a similar survey, almost exactly the same, where students will take part of this again, and we'll be able to see if we have closed any of the students that didn't have connections. Our goal is to, to make sure that all of our students have that. We'll use our baseline data compared to our new data. So when we come back in February, we should have that data as well from the second, from the second survey to be able to report on. So that continues to be happening. Priority number two centers around the recruiting and retaining of high-quality staff, ensuring that every staff member had a sense of community, as well as defining what high-quality staff means. Both of those two things have taken place. We've tried to figure out ways to determine whether or not a staff has a sense of community, and we worked with a committee to determine, to define what a high-quality staff means. Both of those things were placed on a staff survey that was completed just before the holidays. And Jerry Kember from School Perceptions will be presenting the results of that survey at a board meeting in February. We will also be taking a look at that specific data to start really fine-tuning the definitions of, of high-quality staff. So again, by the second board meeting in, in February, the board should have heard the staff results, the staff survey results, whether or not they agree with the definition developed. In fact, that definition is, there's a PDF of the nine criteria that our, that committee came up with and that was pulled by our staff, as well as their connection with the community. So I think in February, we're going to have some really good data revolving around those as well. And then priority number three, again, this was more centered around our students getting them college and career ready. You might have remembered me saying that we were, we were struggling to get students that had a... You might have remembered me saying that we were struggling to get students that were recent graduates to fill out a form so that we could collect their contact information to then send them a survey, okay? We've called a little bit of an audible and we're shifting our approach on that. And instead, we're going to be sending out through any means possible, social media, as well as getting the information out there. I anticipate this happening mostly on social media, for any past graduate to fill out the survey. And one of the questions that we are changing that to is, when did you graduate? So we may get people who graduated in the '70s, '80s, '90s, early 2000s, and that information will still be very valuable. But we'll be able to extrapolate the data from the most recent grads to be able to specifically hone in on whether or not they felt they were college and career ready. So essentially, in summary, instead of trying to get a form out there and gather data for them to fill out information, we're just going to blast this out there and anybody can fill out this form. And the information that we gather will be valuable either way. But then related specifically to this priority and this goal, we'll extrapolate out the data that revolves around the most recent graduates. I think that'll be a little bit more efficient way to just collect the data because we've struggled doing that. And then finally, I had shared with you that there was a recent survey conducted in 21, 22 school year with community and the part, and parents in our school district at that time, as it related to getting students college and career ready. And we were able to track down that data. I have uploaded that in a PDF. It's labeled the Perkins Five Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment. And there was a PDF there that outlines that entire survey that was taken back in 2022. And I'm going to be working with our CTE department and an ad hoc committee on trying to decipher that data and get that final goal taken where we can really define on what does it mean to be college and career ready for our graduates. So that's kind of where we're at. We've made significant progress over the last six weeks in all of them. But I anticipate those first two priorities really having some really good information coming in February. It's well underway and it's just a matter of gathering the final data. Any questions on that? Thank you.
All right, time to agenda item 10, action items, 10 A, referendum discussion.
Okay, so if you have not looked at the board docs, the electronic version lately, meaning today, you should do so. I know that a couple of you have printed copies and so I've tried to get you printed copies. I do have one more printed copy if a board member is having trouble accessing. Specifically, I'm looking at the blue information, okay, in the memo. In addition, every board member should have a printed copy of both the Morris Leatherman survey results when Peter Leatherman presented last Thursday, as well as the Nexus referendum options. It's all in one packet. You have one packet. Both of those presentations are included in there. And then finally, there's a third PDF that was uploaded today. Quarles and Brady, these are the folks that draft the resolutions and the ballot questions. They were able to get us some sample language on what a referendum question may look like. It is not chiseled in concrete. If there's any alterations that we make, they're still going to have to go through their legal vetting process before we bring anything back for final approval on the 22nd. But at least that PDF will give you some idea of what a sample ballot would look like. And I just want to take a moment to talk about that specific PDF, just so that the board understands what they're looking at. We are really referring to potentially two different types of questions. One is a operational referendum. That is the one that is mostly centered around the $2.5 million. And on page one of the sample referendum ballot, you'll see that the first question that Quarles and Brady has drafted, again, just a draft, just a sample, centers around a $2.5 million recurring referendum. This would be a referendum that would go on year after year. And again, I shared with the board on last Thursday, advantages and disadvantages of a recurring versus a non-recurring. Advantages of a recurring are that you only have to do it once and that money is year-over-year money and you avoid referendum fatigue to your community. The disadvantage, one of the primary financial disadvantages of a recurring referendum is that as you decline in enrollment, you don't get the full $2.5 million each year, okay? Or whatever that number is. As enrollment decreases, you get a different amount with that operational. On page two of that PDF, again, the first question is another operational sample question. And this would be, and I've got it highlighted there in green, of course, the real ballot doesn't have anything highlighted. It's just for your references. This would be that non-recurring referendum where we've kind of escalate or step into the amount to exceed the revenue limit. It would start off at 2.3 million in '24, '25, increase by 100,000 each of the next three years. Again, the sample question is centered around a four-year, non-recurring referendum that would go from 2.3, then 2.4, 2.5, and then finishing with 2.6 in '27, '28, which would assure the community that we would have to go back to a referendum, starting with the '28, '29 school year. It would give us a chance to reassess. It would give us a chance to prove to the community what we have done. And you would get that full dollar amount in each of those years. It doesn't have anything to do with the enrollment. It's truly tacked on top of it. But you do have to go back then for referendum when it's completed. So that is the operational side of it. And I think maybe, Mr. President, unless you want to take a different direction, maybe we should just focus on the operational side first and then the capital and then tie them all together. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, where we can tackle the operational all the way through to the motion and then move on to capital.
Sure. And while they are tied a little bit together, because of the way the district has managed its debt over the last few years, using defisance as its primary, prepaying of debt, right, as its primary strategy, regardless of which one of these two operational referendums the board would choose, if this is the route they would be choosing, this would not have any tax rate increase to the public. This would be using the tax rate of defisance with no longer defees and instead, the operational referendum would take over. There is some capital as well that you can tack onto it, but essentially this would be at a zero tax increase to the public in terms of tax rate as it relates to the operational. Go ahead, Mr. President.
All right, so I think what I'm going to do is just go around the room, around the board here and gather feedback on thoughts as far as recurring, non-recurring. And then we'll, we have enough support for either of them or none of them, we'll make a motion. And not to put you on the spot, Mr. Dowdman, but you have the most experience and tenure here, so I think I'm going to start with you.
Well, my point of view on referendums is non-recurring. I like to have our stakeholders have a say in it. And if we take the money and do with what we say we're going to do, then they can come back and they'll grant us an extension on that, in my opinion. So that's where I've always been with stuff like this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Dowdman, especially considering, as Mr. Board mentioned, the plateau that we expect to reach in four years with declining enrollment. It would be nice to not have as many variables and unknowns and just have a set dollar amount that we can plan accordingly.
Thank you. Mr. Dickman?
Um, yeah, I was leaning towards a non-recurring for the same two reasons. The same. When it was explained the other, last Thursday, I liked the idea of the non-recurring more than the recurring for declining enrollment. And I think just assessing where we're at and where we want to go. And I think that's clear communication, so I like the non-recurring.
Same way, after seeing the numbers and the data, I'm in full support of the non-recurring as well.
I think a big piece is public perception. So if we're asking for a recurring referendum, knowing that enrollment's going to decline, I think it's a bigger ask because when does that shut off? You're asking for $2.5 million every year forever. So I absolutely agree. And then it gives us an opportunity to go with the non-recurring, to prove ourselves, of being a good steward of that market.
I'm 100% agree.
Okay, well, let's move on to make a motion then, Mr. Board, if you're fine with that.
Yes.
Is there a motion then to direct the superintendent to draft a resolution for a non-recurring referendum in the amount of $2.3 million in 2024, '25, $2.4 million in 2025, '26, $2.5 million in 2026, '27, and $2.6 million in 2027, '28?
I'll make a motion.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wertz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. Any further discussion, questions?
I will just add, just so everybody's clear, we're not voting on officially going to referendum. This is purely to bring the ballot, the official ballot question back. It will look very similar to page two of the PDF, but the 22nd is when everything will become official as far as whether it's on a ballot or not.
Correct. Thank you. Aye?
Aye.
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 So, Mr. Board, we'll move on to the capital, part of the referendum discussion.
Okay, so regarding the capital, again, just in summary here, and you've got all of this stuff in the PDF, Mr. Leatherman had identified six priorities that he recommended that the school district focus on. There were three additional priorities that the public showed support for, but they really would have maybe a hard time financially supporting it. Or at least they felt like they could financially support it. He said that if we could stay under that $15 per month on an average home in the original school district, which would be a $161,000 property, and we stuck with the top priority, that we could go up to $15. $15 gets us to 27,700. That was the number, 27,700,000 that we would get for that. However, then in some of the packages that Nexus shared, and the folks from Nexus are here tonight if we have any specific building questions and what was included and what wasn't included. The top six priorities were, which would be safety and security, ADA compliance, tech ed upgrades, air conditioning at the buildings that don't have it, HVAC and energy efficiency, and hard surface areas and roof at the high school, as well as deferred maintenance, okay? Those seven things, the seven thing being the deferred maintenance, and then the six priorities. That we could do that for $24,950,000. And that would be, these are estimate numbers. We haven't gotten official numbers back from Baird, but that would be on a $161,000 home, about $13.42 each month on a $161,000 home, okay? It was pointed out by Nexus that one of the options that you have, because there was support for the seventh priority, that you could earmark a certain amount of money towards the next priority, which would be the auditorium upgrades. There certainly can be a case made that a good portion of those upgrades are truly a need and not just a want, right? Many of the equipments, you heard folks earlier tonight say many of the things in that auditorium are original, right? And so there certainly is some need that we need. The second item that I've got on here, just as kind of a starting point, is an additional $1 million. So it would be $25,950,000. That would allow us to do the first six priorities and then allocate $1 million to auditorium upgrades. It wouldn't be everything. It wouldn't be the full 1.9 million, but it would be a good starting point and a good chunk of addressing those top priorities in the auditorium. That would come in, again, estimated numbers, on a $161,000 home, that would come in a monthly tax increase of $14.01. So right around the $14 mark for that. And again, the board can go anywhere they want with this, but I do think you start getting above $26 million and you do probably start getting into some of the wants. And this would be really nice and no longer addressing the absolute necessities and needs. So those are the numbers. You all heard Peter Leatherman speak. You've heard Nexus speak. Again, Nexus is here tonight. I can try to answer any questions as well. Those are what it would look like, again, on an average home, $13.42 for the '24, '09, and right around $14 for the '25, '09. That would be about $1 million earmarked for auditorium upgrades. Both of those numbers are well below the $15 that Peter Leatherman said that we would need to stay below in order to have good confidence that this thing could pass. But again, it would all come down to how well we tell the story and tell the needs to the public and the community. Any questions before I turn it over, Mr. President?
Do you have the amount per month that we would include on the 75 auditorium, the estimated 27, 26?
Yeah, you're basically adding another $1 million and you would be looking at approximately another 63 cents onto that. So you'd be right around, you know, 14, 65, somewhere in there. I think it was just shy of 2 million, something like that. Again, if you, and before, again, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to just jump right back in there again. But on that PDF, the sample questions, just like the operational, was question number one on each one. Question number two is down below. The first one is what it would look like if it was a 24.95. Again, I've kind of got it highlighted there for the school facility improvements and then those priorities there that Quarles and Brady developed. And then the only difference in page two is that it's 25, '09. Again, that number can be anything you want, but then we've added the auditorium upgrades in the ballot question since that would be a major component. Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
All right. So it sounds like we have obviously a couple of options here with the draft resolutions. One, the amount of $24.95 million, the tax increase of $13.42 that covers all of our needs, one through six. Another one at $25,950,000 for a tax increase of $14.01 that covers all of those top six absolute needs and about $1 million of the auditorium needs. And then, correct, wrong here, Mr. Board, but then $26,950,000 for a tax increase of about 14, 65 or 66?
It's, yeah, it'd probably be just shy of 14, 65. Again, these are estimates and they're based on a $161,000 home, but they are just estimates. I don't want anybody to hold us to that. We would have to get official numbers back from Baird. But we spoke with them on the phone today and they gave us, you know, good guidance. They're not going to be off by, you know, an astronomical amount. And I should also point out that all of these numbers do include the operational referendum that we've already talked about. So there's nothing on top of it, so.
And that $26,950,000 would get you the top six needs, the auditorium needs and the wants.
Basically, the top seven priorities.
Top seven priorities, yeah. So, go around the room, do the same thing.
Just real quick.
Just real quick. Emily, do you happen to have the breakdown of the cost for the auditorium? Because I know in the presentation on Thursday, we didn't have that.
Oh, the breakdown of what?
Of what's included in that 1.973.
I need Brian to unmute.
Emily, can you unmute Brian Winterley, please?
There he is. Can we get here?
Brian, we cannot hear you. If there's anything on your end, you can look at doing.
How about now?
Yes.
There we go.
Okay, perfect. Everything that's included in that is lighting, audio, video, rigging, and a new stage deck.
Does that also include the dressing room addition?
No, it does not.
Does not, okay.
And that number with the inflation, as shown last week, is 27,160, if you include the inflation in it, just.
As opposed to just the line item, having the contingency and the inflation clause in there?
Yeah.
Sure. 27,160?
Yeah.
So you're going to be somewhere in the between 1460 and, I'm just guessing here, low 1470s?
Yeah.
1480 perhaps? You'd be getting $15.
It also includes apartment and auditorium.
Brian, how much would it be if we would include the full auditorium with the dressing rooms?
Dressing room, the dressing room addition, probably would add another 800,000.
Okay, thank you.
So again, $26,950,000, is that what we're sticking to?
I think Kelly said.
27,160.
Oh, 27.
Just so you have the inflation in there.
Oh, I got you. All right, we're good now. So I guess go around the room. Want to start, Mr. Bailey?
For me, if we, if we're going to do this, I think we need to include all of the building portions up to include the auditorium upgrades, since there is a lot of that that is just regular maintenance. Having been in there and worked in the Cinderella musical this fall, there's curtains that are ready to fold out in there. There's, just talking with Mr. Morwick on the lighting, talking with Mr. Muth on the lighting, there's a significant enough need, I think, for the additional essentially 70 cents per month. It makes sense just to go ahead and actually write it in and not have a hope that we'll have money left to be able to apply towards that. And then what do we do? All that's left is 500, and we need a million dollar worth of changes or potentially almost 2 million worth of changes. Is that really worth not having that built into it? I think people will, because they can see it, they can sit in it, they can experience it, that that means more than something that's not tangible. And because people can see that, they know that it's essentially original space, then it makes sense.
I just wanted to add that, so I have grandchildren that go to the original school district. I also have grandchildren that go to the Reesburg schools. So I go to every band, choir, every dance, everything. And I want to say over at Reesburg, I've always been very impressed with their auditorium. While you're waiting, they have one activity after another, one show coming, one artist coming, just constantly showing that, showing artists they've had there. I think that our auditorium is underutilized. I think that it could really become the focus point here. I do agree with Cole and George that on that topic, having been involved with Star Spangled for many, many years, I also know that you have to have certain requirements in place to even host those kind of shows. So as well as SSC was received here, I think that having those kind of events back at our auditorium, as well as all the dance and plays and things like that, I think it could be a big revenue source for our school district. So just, I would keep that in mind, and I'd like to see that.
Yeah, and from my perspective, over the years I've been on the board, we've always talked about doing things to the auditorium to upgrade it here and there. Costs have been a major thing. 5,000, 10,000 really is not going to do anything in there, so I would support putting that on there.
I'm for needed upgrades, as long as the dollar amount does not exceed $15 increase. And so I can see the need and the benefits of including the auditorium up to, like I said, to exceed the $15 threshold.
I agree, I don't want to go over what we were recommended by professionals that we brought in to tell us that, but if we go up to that point, I would love to see it spent on the arts, for sure.
I agree with everything that everybody said, including, let's try not to get past that $15, since that's what people are in danger of.
Thank you. Yes, that $27,160,000 would be projected to be below that $15 threshold. Correct, Mr. Board?
I would have to just do in some simple math, I would have to believe it's going to be well under that. I mean, again, you're up in the upper 14s, but it's going to be below $15. And the auditorium did have 58, 59% support from the community, so. I just want to, and I'm all for, you know, doing whatever we can. I do want to caution, because I saw it come, it happened in 2020. We did stretch the referendum number beyond what the survey supported, and as a result, it failed close, you know, by close margins. So Mr. Leatherman seems to think that, you know, we still have a comfortable margin in here. You guys heard the same presentation, that's what I heard anyway. I think there's enough support for the auditorium that we're not exceeding that, but obviously we're increasing it a little bit more than what the community, I shouldn't say, would like, but we're getting closer to that number, right? So just beware of that.
Board still comfortable with me making a motion? All right, we've seen a head nods. Well, is there a motion then to direct the superintendent to draft a resolution for capital improvements in the amount of $27,160,000 for the purposes of safety and security and site improvements, ADA compliance updates, technology, education improvements at RCHS, infrastructure and HVAC, including AC to buildings where needed, roofing improvements at RCHS, district-wide capital maintenance, acquisition of furnishing, fixtures, and equipment, and auditorium upgrades? So move. Motion was made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Hunktmer. Any discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
All right, so I will get, work with Quarles and Brady to get final resolutions and ballots language drafted. I don't think they'll change much from what you've seen, other than the price on this last one. And then we will also get official numbers from Baird on what these two referendum questions will do, so that we have that exact number. On the 22nd, the board would then look to adopt those resolutions. It would go on the ballot in April, and then between January 23rd and that election date, which I believe is April 1st, the board will have to, excuse me, the district will have to hold numerous listening sessions, informational sessions, to as many people as possible. Hopefully, we can engage the community to help spread that word as well and get the correct information out there, so that everybody is informed voting coming April. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Dolan, we're not broadcasting audio.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, on to 10B, the 2024-2025 school calendar.
Okay, so every other year, the district and the Board of Education looks to adopt district calendars for the next two years. And this has kind of been going on for several years. The idea being that if we're two years out, staff, families, students, everybody can make the appropriate vacation plans, they can start to plan things as it relates to spring break, when the first day of school, last day of school, is, things like that. So that process was scheduled to start again this fall and late fall. And with that, there's always a calendar committee comprised of numerous staff members, and those staff members brought forth a proposal of a different type of calendar, which we are labeling the PLC model. And a PLC model basically is, and a lot of school districts around Southwest Wisconsin and scattered throughout Wisconsin use this type of model, they essentially have one day each week where school would get out for students, they would get out early, and that would allow for staff to collaborate in a real fashion, not just free time, but it would truly focus on student learning. Some staff training can take place at that time, and really, instead of having these odds and ends, in-service days or early releases like we have this Friday, you would have a consistent time. So this PLC calendar is a proposal that basically every Wednesday, school for students would get out at 2:00 at the elementary level, 2:20 at the high school level, and then staff would stay, and they would be focusing in these PLCs, these professional learning communities, where they are really centered around not only training, but student learning and student outcomes. And so this idea was brought forth, we proposed a calendar, it was taken to the different staff members, they gathered some feedback back, calendar committee got together again, they were able to make some good compromises after they addressed some of the needs or questions that staff had proposed, came up with a calendar that is one of the attachments in your board docs, it's labeled the 2:00 release PLC Wednesdays, that PDF. This was then taken to the curriculum committee as well as the personnel committee. This calendar proposal passed both of those committees, I believe unanimously, although those committees shares can share if it was different, but I believe it was unanimously. And now it's being brought to the full board for approval. Because this proposal was a new calendar, a PLC model, they did not feel comfortable approving two years at a time, but instead, let's approve one year, let's approve the 24-25 and see how it goes, and this time next year, then we could look at approving two years with any tweaks that may need to take place after having lived in it for a year, or, excuse me, a half a year next year. So some of the questions that was brought forth, as it relates to private schools, busing, sting, those things are addressed in your memo. The sting question may not be addressed in the memo, but I can tell you that the sting after-school program, that would look at, instead of, right now this year, the sting program does not run on early outs, it's not offered. In this model, it would be offered every Wednesday starting at 2:00, and we would figure out staffing arrangements, so that's less of a burden for families as it relates to daycare. Again, this did come as a recommendation for not only the staff calendar committee, but from both the curriculum committee and the personnel committee. The traditional draft calendar is there as well for your reference, so you can see how it kind of aligns, but the recommendation is to try this PLC calendar and try it for the 24-25 school year. Personnel or curriculum chairs, do you have anything to add that happened at your current committee meetings that I missed?
No, I think the major questions really came up that it seems like it's extremely beneficial for the district, but how do we take care of, you know, parents and things like that and after-school programs? So I think if we can maybe get this approved and sort that out and communicate that, I think that's probably going to be a lot of weight off of some parents' shoulders, that might be concerned about how am I going to take care of my kid getting done at 2:00 every week, but, you know? So I think that was the biggest discussion we had at curriculum. So just sorting out what that after-school program and athletics and things like that looks like for that year will be the next work in progress.
Did we get response back from Eagle School that they're on board with this? Because initially, they were a no for the 2:00 with the busing and busing portion of that.
Mr. Bosworth, I don't know if you've heard anything recently.
They were initially a no for the 1:00, and then we changed 2:00, and I have not heard back one way or the other.
If they, they as an Eagle, St. Mary's is on board with it, if Eagle were to not partake in it, and we, you know, either chose to or it was deemed that we had to transport them, it would be about $6,000 for that cost.
Never really know other issues other than what was discussed?
There are some minor, I don't know if they're minor, but there are some details that we've got to work out yet in terms of what do extracurricular activities look like in terms of practices and those kinds of things, but Mrs. Wood's just pointing to think if we have, if we know this is the model we're going to live in, then we can start figuring out the best way to do that.
Are there different start times and end times for the two calendars?
In terms of the time of year?
No, like the daily schedule? Because for the PLC, is that the calendar?
Yep.
That one, school would end a couple of days earlier?
It's better. And you know, stage and sport and the PLC and then get it one time.
Yeah, and Mr. Bosworth, I may need to have you refresh my memory, but Mr. Dowden, if you look at the traditional calendar, Monday, December 23rd, okay, is a day that on the traditional calendar, you may have to go. Because of the number of minutes and the way it all works out, we're actually gaining a few minutes throughout the course of the calendar year. And with that, we'd be able to have additional in-service days and give staff and family, like days like the 23rd off, that are actually less days that we would have to attend. 175 student days in the traditional calendar and 173 student days in the PLC calendar. Mr. Bosworth, am I missing anything on that?
No.
I would also add, if you look at each of those calendars, in the lower left-hand corner, and it's kind of in a box, there are the built-in weather days. The traditional calendar has, you know, nine plus built-in weather days for the majority of our district, and then EC 4K less. We've used some of those days and get down to what I would call average for the PLC model. There's five and a half, six days for the majority of the district, and then EC 4K is a little less. Monday, Wednesday, 4K is significantly less, but... Monday, Wednesday, four K is significantly less, but anytime that they're, they have weather days that fall on those particular days, they use Fridays as kind of a makeup day, so there's kind of an organic fix for those if they all share the minutes. But we are meeting the minute requirements in both and exceeding it by at least five and a half days.
Questions?
Teacher contracted days would remain at one eighty-eight.
Is there a motion then to approve the recommendation from the curriculum committee and personnel committees for the 2024-2025 PLC school calendar as presented? I'll make that motion. Motion made by Mr. Huntimer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wirtz. Any further discussion, questions? Ms. Traxel?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, on to ten C, limits for incoming open enrollment students, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, so each January, every school district in the state of Wisconsin has to approve their open enrollment limits for special education programming. The state allows districts to put a cap on certain special education programming so that they have the ability to deny incoming open enrollment requests that go beyond our ability to meet the needs of our students essentially. So Mr. Jossem has put together the caps and that would be in our intellectually disabled, our ID programs at the intermediate school and the high school, not to exceed five open enrollment students. Of course, we always have to meet the needs of our resident students. We do not ever get to choose that, as well as not to exceed five in the primary school autism program for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Any questions specifically, Mr. Jossem? I'm sure can answer them, but I think it's fairly straightforward and most of you have seen similar requests before.
Questions from board members?
So these are the only two out of the twelve disabilities that you can cap? Or do these encompass all of those twelve?
We can cap more if we want. D P I doesn't say you can only cap these certain areas, but this is sort of what we've done. About ten years ago, D P I allowed us to reject open enrolled students if the financial impact was too high. Now we can't. So now the only way we can turn away students, not that we want to, but the only way we can turn away open enrolled students is because of space.
And these specific programs have, they're confined in a or a couple of classrooms and therefore they have physical limitations, whereas a student who might have a speech, need speech, they're not necessarily taking up any space in a specific program. Is that correct?
Yeah, I also say these are probably our highest cost areas for students. And because we only get, what, thirty percent back on reimbursement and then over thirty thousand, so that's kind of why we cap these three areas.
Any other questions from the board? Is there a motion then to approve having an open enrollment limit of not to exceed five students in the ID programs at both RCIS and RCHS and not to exceed five students in the RCPS autism program classroom for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
Make motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dowden. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wirtz. Mr. Dowden?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion to move into closed session pursuant under statutes nineteen point eight five one C and/or F as appropriate to consider employment, promotion and compensation of employees for purposes of discussing individual employee hiring and compensation in Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one F and Wisconsin statutes one eighteen point one two five to discuss student open enrollment applications and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will undertake a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Mr. Huntimer?
Aye.
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 Aye.